Hello, everyone. I'd like to open a regular meeting of Pearland City Council. My name's David Little. I'm filling in for Mayor Reed, who had a minor illness. And we'd ask that you keep him in your hearts and prayers. He should be back at the next meeting. And please rise for the invocation led by Councilman Reed.
Everyone, please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to see another day, Lord. Lord, please continue to watch over our great city. Watch over our mayor and his absence, Lord. Please be with him and his family. Lord, please allow us to make decisions tonight that are in your name and guided by you and only you, Lord. Please continue to watch over our first responders, our first responders, and the men and women that serve in our military, Lord. Please just watch over everyone as they leave this place tonight. Allow them to make it home safely to their families. These blessings and many others we ask in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Councilman Moore, would you lead the pledge?
Please draw me in. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The next thing on our agenda is the roll call. As the record reflect, all members of council are present. Now we'll go to citizen comments, and I'll let Councilman Perez handle that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We don't have any notifications for citizen comments at this time or notifications about any citizen comment for any agenda item. So I think we're free to move forward.
Thank you, Councilman Perez. There's no public hearing tonight, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any council members that would like to pull any of the agenda items? Mr. Councilman Owens has pulled items Q and J.
Yes, I'd like to pull items F and G.
Anyone else? Councilman Reed, would you present the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda with the omission of items Q, J, F, and G.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Reed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
We move on to item A on our consent. I'm sorry, we'll pull item F. Staff report, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. This is an update to our gas code. Every three years, we revisit our various codes and ordinances to keep up with the national guidelines. This is the second reading that we have on this particular item, and we're just making those updates in accordance with the information you have in your packet. We'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, sir. Can you go ahead and present the item, please, Mr. Councilman Reed?
No problem. Consideration possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number 1210-2019. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll move to council discussion now. Councilman Owens?
F.
J. F.
This one. Yeah. The only thing that I had, this is the one with us in Missouri City, I believe. I think on this one, we got the information previously on here when I was talking to John earlier, and I believe he answered my question I had. It was a very minor question. So I don't have anything else to enter on it.
Councilman Moore?
I have nothing.
Councilman Hernandez?
No comment. Thank you.
Councilman Perez?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just for clarification, to follow up on discussion previous, previous public meeting discussion, what we are doing in this update to the plumbing code is we're removing the amendment that previously required individual grease traps or individual users, even if they're sharing the same shell space. That is correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so now we can, in the conversation we had previous that never got brought back, we were intending to do it with this updated plumbing code. So this closes that item. Now we can have regional grease traps for the same shell space, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Councilman Reed?
No comment.
Councilman Orlando?
Nothing from me.
Anything else from staff?
No, sir.
Okay. Madam Secretary, we have a motion, a second on the floor.
Councilmember Reed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
All right, we'll move on to consent item number G now. Councilman Hernandez, would you please present this item?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Consideration possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number 1296-2019. So moved.
Second.
Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. This item is the second reading of amending Chapter Seven of the Building Code. During the first reading, we discussed adding, in addition to the amendments that you, we previously discussed, we ended up adding information regarding to rebar and residential driveway construction. So that amendment has been placed in there, and we are recommending approval, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Moore? Councilman Moore?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Hernandez?
No comment. Thank you.
Councilman Perez?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just for clarification, on the amendment that we talked about where we're adding the requirement that they, that the spec builders or home builders are required, they're required to have rebar in the driveway. We've made that change, and I think it's a great change. My only concern is, I think we need to add an amendment to modify the language so there's a little less rigidity. No pun intended. But right now, we're specifically saying number three bar at 12-inch on center at 2,500 PSI concrete. I think, one, I would probably lower the rebar and increase the concrete personally, but maybe we set a minimum, possibly to match what the engineering design criteria requires for the approach, but allow them to do more if they wish. Technically, the way it reads right now, if you don't do those two things, then you've ordered a legal driveway, and we don't, we don't really want to make it that rigid, I don't think. Or at least, that's my opinion. So as long as any other, no other council member objects, I would like to make that amendment to this, to this motion.
Councilman Reed?
No comment.
Councilman Orlando?
Nothing from me.
Then with that, I'd like to amend the motion as stated in my previous comments.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion to amend passed, seven to zero. And we'll vote on the original motion. Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
On the amended motion, aye. You said original.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Councilman Orlando, would you present consent item number J, please?
Consideration possible action, number R2019-114. So moved.
Second.
Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. This is, we're recommending approval of an interlocal agreement with the city of Missouri City so that we can jointly purchase off of each other, others cooperative purchasing agreement, if you will. You may notice in the item that what we're recommending is this contract for two years with three automatic renewals. That's different than what we typically do for contracts. However, anything that would go over $50,000 would automatically come back to you for approval in regards to that cooperative purchasing item. This is the agreement that they provided, Missouri City, to us and proposed in regards to the interlocal agreement. We wouldn't normally recommend an agreement for two years with automatic renewals, but because any item over $50,000 would come back to you, we are recommending approval. We'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. We'll open it for council discussion. Councilman Owens?
Yeah, the only thing I've got on this agreement, and to give an example of what that would be, why would we be going to have an agreement with Missouri City on, I can see it with HGAC and other places like that, but I'm not too sure what we do.
So it could be for materials, it could be for supplies. It would be an opportunity, when we look at the other cooperative purchasing agreements, if these prices are better, then we would go with that already agreed upon price. So this is just another opportunity for us to use a different cooperative purchasing agreement.
But don't tell you, you know, I'm not against it, but I'm just wondering why that they, they use the same agreements that we do for statewide-type things on agreement. And I was just wondering why they would figure we'd get a best, better contract or better pricing on a contract than they would, or why would they have a better pricing on a contract or something, materials or supplies than, than we would have? That was the only thing, because, you know, most cities use the same things. And since you were there, you probably can answer that maybe better. I don't know.
I think one of the ones we've used in the past and we're looking to use again is they, they have a pretty robust street maintenance program, especially on concrete streets. They've got a fair amount of dollars to do that, and, and they allocate a lot of that to concrete streets. So they've got concrete street replacement and concrete raising contracts, and the concrete raising contracts, one we've used in the past and we're looking to bring back to use again in the future. And they get pretty competitive pricing on that based on the size of their contracts.
Okay, so this could be with a local vendor or something like that?
It, it's any bid that they award, is my understanding, is that we could buy off of that in a cooperative, per the interlocal cooperative purchase, get the same pricing they do. So when they do something like that, they spend a lot more money than we do in that arena, so we can take advantage of the greater buying power that they have when they bid theirs out.
Well, it'd be something that we kind of monitor with Missouri City on some things that we may potentially look at, you know, teaming with or actually using their prices.
Yes, sir. And then, of course, they can look at any of our contracts where we do, you know, we have greater volume, that maybe we have better purchasing power on those. And it's very similar to having the interlocal with counties, where we buy materials off the county contracts that they bid out. And so it's just same thing, but with a city, another city. And so, you know, anything over 50,000, we will bring back to, any contracts, we'll bring back to council for approval under this interlocal, when we're ready to start purchasing off those contracts.
Okay. I just, I don't remember us doing an interlocal with another city. We may have, but I don't remember us doing that. But that's okay, you answered my question.
Councilman Moore? Councilman Hernandez?
No comment. Thank you.
Councilman Perez?
No comment.
Councilman Reed?
No comment.
Councilman Orlando?
No comment.
Anything further from staff?
No, sir.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion, a second on the floor.
Councilmember Orlando, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Councilman Owens, will you present agenda letter number Q, please?
Consideration possible action, first and only reading of ordinance number 1582. So moved.
Second.
Staff report?
I don't think we had the right resolution number read on that one. If we could redo that, please.
Councilman Owens?
It should be R2019-224. We're looking at item Q, correct?
For Q?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought we'd just finished that one. Okay. Consideration possible action, resolution number R2019-224. So moved.
Second.
Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and City Council. This is recommending a, amending an existing contract that we have with International Paint and Body here in the city of Pearland. We currently have an agreement with them where we need to extend that agreement for an additional $50,000, which would total $90,000. As you're probably aware, based on even another agenda item we have later, we've had, we basically used up the entire contract that we already have had for fleet maintenance. We've had several vehicles that have had to be repaired, and this is just adding additional funds to the contract to get us through the rest of the year of vehicles that have been damaged that need to be repaired.
Does that mean we're crashing more vehicles than we had budgeted?
We estimate on an, are we budgeted on an annual basis what we've done in previous years. This year is a better or worse year, depending on how you look at it.
I will open it for council discussion. Councilman Owens?
That could be a bad omen, you know, to increase a budget on something that hadn't happened yet on vehicles. That, that was the only thing I had a concern on, the number of vehicles that was, from 18 to 19, it increased significantly in the number of vehicles that were damaged. Is that just because of traffic here or things that have happened, or what? Is there any semblance of what is causing that?
Not really. I just think it's what happened this particular year compared to other years.
Yeah, I guess. I mean, you know, it looks like you're on a grassy year that we got, you know, in 18, we did 39,000, and this year, we're looking at 81,000 for a total. So that's a pretty significant increase through there. But most of this would come back through the insurance that we have on, on those.
Some of it may, but we've had a, some of it may. That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Moore? Councilman Hernandez?
I had similar concerns to Mr. Owens, but thank you for answering the questions. Just looking here, seeing, you know, all the vehicles still pending as well, and so I was happy to hear that at least, hopefully, a big portion of this is reimbursable from insurance. Thank you for answering our questions.
Councilman Perez?
No further comment.
Councilman Reed?
No comment.
Councilman Orlando?
No comment.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion, a second on the floor.
Councilmember Owens, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Okay, before we move on to the regular agenda, we do have one system that would like to comment, and I'll let Councilman Perez present that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As I had mentioned to you, there was one individual that had not had an opportunity to present the speaker's request form, so we did not call him up previously. So to give him an opportunity to speak, Mr. Philip Moore, if you want to come up now and offer us your insight on this matter, please come to the podium. We need you to speak your name and address clearly into the microphone for the purpose of the record. Please keep your comments to three minutes, and I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
My name is Philip Moore. I live at, do you need my address?
Yes, sir.
I live at 13711 Rainwater Drive in Pearland, Texas. So I'm coming on behalf of Shadow Creek Ranch, specifically the village of Diamond Bay. We have been inundated with turkey buzzards. And I, my apologies, I didn't expect to be speaking in front of such a large group. But I've made five sets of photos. We have videos. They're everywhere. At first, they were coming out just on trash day, but now they are on our rooftops, they're on our cars, they're on our back patios, literally hundreds and hundreds of birds, and it's every day. And we were told that they're an endangered species. Otherwise, you know, all of my neighbors were all hunters. They would be dropping like flies, so we can't do anything to them. So we're coming to the board to see what, if anything, can be done about these, this nuisance. Our property value is going down, our property taxes are going up, and it's ridiculous. We can't, we can't enjoy our property, we can't go into our yards. Their talons are ripping apart our roofs, and we're just kind of like stuck. So that's, I'm coming on behalf of the West Haven neighborhood, Shadow Creek Ranch, the village of Diamond Bay, just to bring this to the board's attention, just to see what, if anything, can be done to help us out.
So, yeah?
That's all.
Thank you, sir. Just note, we can't dialogue with you because it wasn't on the agenda, but we can follow with you in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to number eight, new business. Councilman Hernandez, could you present the first item?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Consideration possible action, first and only reading of ordinance number 1582. So moved.
Second.
Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem and City Council members. As previously discussed and planned for and approved in the CIP, we are seeking your authorization to issue certificates of obligation Series 2019A in the amount of $4,962,376 for Orange Street Service Center improvements, Phase One, Recreation Center, generator, and other improvements, and plan improvements for the intersection of Broadway and Dixie Farm. For information purposes, Cynthia Pearson, our finance director, she's going to provide you with a brief description of this item and the next agenda item, and she'll then turn it over to our financial advisor, Mr. John Robuck, who will go over the details of the issuance. Also in attendance here this evening, we have our legal counsel, if there's any questions from a legal matter. At the conclusion of Mr. Robuck's comments, we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have. And with that, Cynthia, if you'll kick us off.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we were here, I wanted to make sure this is showing up the way that we do it perfect. We were here back in June to get you started on the debt issuance process for 2019 for our capital improvement program. And at that time, we brought to you the entire program for this year. Tonight, we're here to just review with you very quickly the types of debt that we issue, and those are general obligation bonds, which are currently known as permanent improvement bonds, or PIBs, and they are voter-approved by election. They're secured by property taxes, and we are required by law to levy a tax rate that will cover those payments. We also issue certificates of obligation. This year, we have two issuances. One is 2019A, and the other is 2019B. They are alike in the fact that they are not voted, but they require public notice of intent, which we've done, and they are subject to petition. They are secured by property taxes, and we are also required by law to levy a tax rate that will allow us to pay for those certificates. The difference is, the 2019A bonds are our normal capital improvement projects. The 2019B bonds are those bonds that we expect to be reimbursed for by the TERS, the Shadow Creek TERS, and those monies have already been put into their budget and approved, so we do expect to get reimbursed for those monies. Under the GO bonds, we have three projects, which is the D.L. Smith Drainage Improvements, the Recreation Center and Naterium, Generator and Improvements, and the Hughes Ranch Road, for a total of $6.3 million. Under certificates of obligation Series 2019A, we have Orange Street Service Center, Recreation Center and Naterium, and Broadway at Dixie Farm Intersections Improvements, for a total of $4.9 million. The TERS reimbursable certificates of obligation Series 2019B are Shadow Creek Ranch Park, Bus Station Number Eight, and Shadow Creek Library, for a total of $14.3 million. Also, at this time, we are going to ask that Mr. Robuck will review with you the sales results for both the permanent improvement bonds and the water sewer revenue bonds. As you know, the water sewer revenue bonds are backed by the revenues from that system, so he'll present and review the results of all of those sales. And I wanted to point out that only, there are going to only be two action items, which, number one and number two, they're only for certificates of obligations because you've already taken all of the necessary actions on the water and sewer revenue bonds and the permanent improvement bonds. However, I would like for him to review those results. And with that being said, Mr. Robuck? If I can get out.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Mayor Protem, council members, John Robuck, BeOK Financial Securities. Cynthia, actually, I think this is the second one. Sorry about that. Like Ms. Pearson said, I'd like to go through the results of the permanent improvement refunding bond issue and also the water and sewer system refund and refunding bond issues that we sold on July 25. As I always like to do, current market review. This is outdated because this was as of July 25, but at the time, the general obligation GO bond index was a 3.45, and the revenue index was a 3.93 percent. You notice the trend there is rates are decreasing. We did refund approximately $12.3 million in GO bonds for savings, and on page three here, there in yellow is the savings. We saved about 1.7, almost 1.8 million dollars in debt service savings by refunding those bonds. And then we also issued at the same time the new money portion, $5.5 million, to generate $6,358,000 in proceeds for the city. Sources and uses of funds, it's on the next page. Again, issued $15,755,000 in permanent improvement refunding bonds. Of that, $10.2 million was for the refunding, and the all-cost interest rate on the refunding was a 2.298 or 2.3 percent, the very low rates. And again, the savings generated was 1.7, almost 1.8 million dollars. On the new money portion, we issued $5,515,000 in bonds and generated proceeds, again, of And the all-cost interest rate on that bond issue, or that portion, was a 2.628 percent. We are closing on this issue, this Thursday, actually, on the 29th of August, and wires will be distributed, and at that point, the city will receive the funds for the $6.4 million proceeds. Water and sewer, we refunded $27,250,000 in bonds from the 2007, 2010A and 2010B bond series. As a result of that refunding, we saved, actually, I can't see them. I'm sorry. I'm trying to small on the screen here. I apologize. We saved over $4 million in just cost savings on the refunding portion. Then the new money portion, we generated $13,535,000 for project and water and sewer. And then on the sources and uses of funds, we issued $22,985,000 in bonds on the refunding portion. All-cost interest rate was a 2.233 percent. And again, total debt service savings was $4,076,000. On the new money portion, we issued a On the new money portion, we issued $11,605,000 in bonds to generate proceeds of $13,535,000 for projects. And the all cost in the new money portion was a 2.575 percent. Again, we're closing on this bond issue also on Thursday, at which point the city will receive those funds for the projects. I'm very pleased with the rates. Obviously, these have been proved and done. We're closing again on Thursday. And I'll answer your questions you have on those two bond issues before I move on to the COs that we're asking you to approve tonight. No questions?
Council, have any questions?
Well, I just got some, a question on the verbiage on one, the North Brown Frontage Road on 288. We're saying that 3.8 million was originally budgeted for that, and now Tech Knot's picking it up. And so, did we sell, actually sell bonds for that or not? Or is that just what we had listed that was going to use in our match with the county?
Yeah, that item's not on for tonight. That was what we initially estimated. That's the reason why the number's lower than what we initially presented to you.
Well, I understand that it's not on there tonight, but at some point in time, I'd really appreciate if somebody put that on there. There's been a lot of discussion on that, and the reason that we did it so early was to get a better rate, but it don't, you know, our better cost of doing the frontage road, it don't seem like it's happening. But that's the only question I had when I saw on here that we had, and it's budgeted in there, but it was not so. And so, we're showing the difference on there. So I'm not a big fan of certificates of obligation anyway, to be honest with you, especially going out with these dollar amounts that we've been doing over the previous year of the total amount of certificates that we had, you know, and those did not go to the taxpayers to approve. General obligations do, but not certificates of obligation. And so, certificates of obligation is going to be a pretty high-priced part of us doing business, to be honest. But the other side, I do want to have some kind of discussion on this, on the other part.
Will do.
Councilman Moore?
I somewhat agree with Councilman Owens. A lot of the COs we're doing, I mean, we're doing a lot of COs of late, and it's just, it's really starting to rack up. And, I mean, we just went out for bond. I mean, we could have attached some of this stuff into the bond and had the voters vote on it opposed to issuing COs on it, regardless if, you know, council did some pushback on the cost of the bond. But we could have rolled this stuff in opposed to doing COs on it, so. And I'm not particularly fond of having to do the cost of the generator at the Naterium, and that's all lumped in with this, so.
Councilman Hernandez?
I, to a degree, agree with the comments already made by Councilmembers Owens and Moore. However, I mean, I've looked over a lot of these projects. I mean, it seems that, yes, I mean, there may be some superfluous items here and there throughout some of the ones that we have coming up, but overall, this is, I mean, I think we're in a situation where it's either we do it or we don't. And I guess it's going to come down to whether or not we believe that it's necessary to be done.
Councilman Perez?
Thank you. You know, we've essentially probably, we've already moved forward on all of these projects, so I think we're under obligation to do, to move forward with these bond issuances. I just want to say, like, we do continue to bandy about the idea that we don't enjoy using the certificates of obligation as a funding mechanism without specifically stating my opinion about that. I do think that, you know, one of the things we need to do maybe in the future is have a workshop or discuss how we want to use those in the future. We tend to have that conversation reactively after we're kind of too far down the road to prevent using the certificate of obligation, and staff doesn't know how to program what we want to do in the future. So maybe at a future council meeting, if somebody else wants to second it, and I can send an email to have this workshop, or where we can discuss what we want to do with a, with the certificate of obligation. With respect to this item, I think we're kind of under an obligation to move forward. So that's all I have.
I think we, I'll second that one for you, to have it at a future date, to talk about it. It is getting to be a very significant number over a period of year, and I think this is something we really need to discuss and see if we can't do it in another way.
I'll send an email and copy.
Councilman Reed?
I'm not specific, I'm not particularly fond of some of the items in this CO. And, you know, everything else has been said with regards to us just, you know, continuously to, continually taking out COs. So, you know, rather than beat a dead horse, you know, I'm just, I'm not fond of everything that's in this.
Councilman Orlando?
Yeah, most everything's been said. I look forward to having that workshop in order to get some more clarity around when we are going to be using COs.
Staff, anything additional?
Yes, sir. I do want to point out what Mr. Roebuck said. We saved over $5 million in refunding on the COs, and then ultimately, $4 million in revenue bonds. So we did save additional money, which you may recall, when we came back to you, when we came to you earlier, we said that we were going to be looking at a little bit additional money on the debt service side. And because of these rates and this ability to refinance, we've been able to come in at a lower debt service this year than we had initially planned. As Councilmember Perez mentioned, all of these items, we've already kind of previously discussed in regards to the CIP, and we have contracts moving forward on these. So this is just the work that has already been started. We recommend approval.
Just really quick, the, is, am I correct in stating that TERS 2 is going to reimburse all of these costs for these projects that are listed on page two?
That's correct.
So for...
On the 2019Bs, yes, sir. The 2019As, no. The $11,980,000, actually, I have clarification. What I went over earlier was the results of the voted debt we sold earlier in the year in the water and sewer. I haven't gone through the CO issues yet.
So where's 2019?
It should be on, well, on the...
Just, can you go over the projects for 2019B?
2019B was the library...
Page five.
Okay, so not, not the Orange Street Service Center, Fire Station Seven?
Fire Station Eight, Shadow Creek Library, Shadow Creek Ranch, Park Phase Two.
Councilmember Reed, that is actually the next item, the item number two on the agenda. This one is just for the ones you just mentioned, the Orange Street Service Center, Naterium improvements, et cetera. Fire Station Number Two, the improvements, and then the landscape improvements, and then the library, that's on the next item.
And that, that library is, that's for a brand-new library?
That is correct.
It's a pretty good price for a brand-new library.
It's a design work only.
Thank you.
Any more from council? Madam Secretary, we have a motion, a second on the floor.
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Owens? Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion passed four to three.
Moving on to item number two. Councilman Orlando, will you present this item?
Consideration of Possible Action, the first and only reading of Ordinance Number 1581. So moved.
Second.
Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Protim, Little, and council members. As discussed and planned, we're seeking your authorization to issue TERS reimbursement certificates of obligation, Series 2019B, and the terms of the issuance in the amount of $14,394,000 for improvements within the Shadow Creek Ranch, tax increment zone for Fire Station Number Eight, Shadow Creek Ranch, Phase Two, Park, and then the design, the design for the Shadow Creek Library. As you're aware, these projects are currently underway. We've already have design contracts on all of those except for, except for the library design. This is just additional funding for that. Mr. Roebuck's going to go over the pricing information for you, and then after that, we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Council discussion? Any comments on council, starting with Councilman, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I was going to quickly get through this, if I'm all right. We did sell both Series, the certificates of obligation this morning. Bond buyer index, again, separate presentation because they were sold at separate times, earlier presentation. The general obligation index is now at a 3.07 percent, so even better rates, and we sold the refunding bonds for both the GO and the water and sewer. We sold both bond issues again today. The As that you already approved were $4,465,000 in principal amounts and generated $4 million, almost $5 million in proceeds. The 2019B are the TERS-related projects. They will be fully reimbursed by the TERS. We are in line, so once we get the developer reimbursements, we're in line there for that. Once we get this back, we'll reimburse ourselves for the cost of this bond issue. And we sold $11,980,000 in bonds and generated $14.4 million in proceeds. The rates on both these bond issues were very low. The As had an all-cost interest rate of 2.502 percent, and the TERS, CO 2019Bs, had an all-cost of a 2.764 percent. And we'll close these bond issues on September 24th, at which time the city will receive the funds, begin work on those projects.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Starting with Councilman Orlando?
Nothing yet.
Councilman Reed?
No comment.
Councilman Perez?
Yeah, a couple of questions, just more on the trend line. Could you go back to the point of the presentation that showed the buyer index? Okay, one, on our, on our packet, it shows a rate of 3.48, and then you've shown a 3.07. Is there...
Your packets due about a week and a half before we sell the bonds.
Fair enough. So we just saw that significant a decrease in the rate over a week?
I think actually, the presentation in your packet is probably from the original scheduled events presentation that was done in June.
Yeah, that's correct. That's what we originally presented to you when we were looking at all of these issuances in the future. That was just reference that you could compare to what we, what's been done this evening.
So we're seeing some savings just by, in that timeframe. It's probably a silly question, but I'll ask it anyway. Do we, do we see this as a downward trend for the near future? Is there going to be some advantage to us refinancing some of our older bonds to try and take advantage of lower rates?
We did all that we can do this year because the Tax Act of 2017 does not allow us to advance refund bonds like we have in the past. So we have to current refund, or basically call bonds, refund bonds within 90 days of the call date. So the next chance we'll have is not till next year about this time.
We can't predict.
We can't predict what you're going to do. If I knew, I wouldn't be here right now.
Fair enough. That's all I have.
Councilman Hernandez?
These are the TERS reimbursable, and I've heard some comments, and just to maybe get some clarification, that there's a line of projects in the, kind of the TERS queue, if you will. So is the likelihood is, I guess, very good on these, that we will be reimbursed?
That's correct.
Okay. That's the only question I had. Thank you.
Can I address that real quick? I forgot to mention, we actually set a call provision on those Bs of March 1 of 2026. So we believe will be reimbursed around that time, maybe one year later. But we'll be able to, as soon as we get those funds, we'll be able to call these bonds off, and they'll be off the, off the books of the city.
Thank you. Anything else?
Councilman Moore?
With the TERS being, reimbursing this, I'm okay with this, but still, you know, TERS was tax money, but I see that as being all for a good cause here. And, I don't know, I'll be okay with this one.
Councilman Owens?
Can you go back to slide number five? Just take a look at that real quick.
I don't have five slides on this page. I have four. Which presentation are you looking?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the total debt service under certificates of obligation.
Right there on page two?
Yeah. Is that what the current debt service is?
Yes, sir. On the far left, it's the current debt service requirements for the city, and then we add in, that includes the permanent improvement bonds we issued earlier and the refunding. Then you add in the 2019A certificates of obligation, then the 2019Bs of obligation, the total debt service requirements there on the far right.
And this is just the certificates of obligation bonds?
This is all of your general obligation debt.
General.
This is all your tax-backed debt.
Okay. It's getting to be a pretty hefty number. All right, that's good. Thank you.
Anything more from staff?
No, sir.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion, a second on the floor.
Councilmember Orlando, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Moving to item number three on the agenda. Councilman Reed, would you present that?
Thank you. Consideration of Possible Action Resolution Number R 2019-222. So moved.
Second.
Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim and council. Mr. Coker has these next two items.
Thank you, Mayor Protim and council. Just to give you just a brief history on this particular mud, this is Brazoria County MUD 509, and we're coming to the council this evening asking consideration to amend for the second time the development, or excuse me, utility agreement with that particular mud. That mud was originally created for the area that is encompassing what is Riverstone Ranch and approximately 660-acre area. And then, subsequent to its creation and adding properties into the mud boundaries, there was a request to add properties that were not contiguous to that area. And so, the council at that time decided to do the initial amendment to the utility agreement, and so that those properties that were not in the original intended boundaries of the mud as it was originally created would only receive a 10-cent rebate on the property tax. As you know, recently, the council considered a new policy, and that policy was that any properties added to an existing mud or any new muds created that would have, or in-city muds, that there would be a zero rebate policy for that moving forward. So MUD 509 has now come and requested the addition of 31 acres, which is actually going to be the next item on the agenda. But in order to do so, to be consistent with the city's policy, it would require an amendment to this utility agreement, and that's what's being presented to you this evening. So the 31 acres that would be considered as the next item would have a zero rebate moving forward if this utility agreement is amended.
We'll open it for council discussion. Councilman Reed?
So there's no incentives at all unless we make that change ourselves for them creating this mud? You said zero rebate.
The mud already exists, and so what it's saying is, for the new properties that are added to this mud...
No additional rebate.
They will not receive any rebate for these properties that you will be considering on the next agenda item. It's 31 acres. And for those 31 acres, it would be a zero rebate for that, for those 31 acres. That's correct.
So every taxpayer that's in that 5 acre, or that 31 acres is going to be, I mean, they're going to be hit pretty hard then, right? I mean, they're...
No, and just so you'll know, Hannah Brook is here with the mud. She's with Allen Boone &amp; Humphries. And each, just so you'll know, that any time a property is annexed into the municipal, into a mud, those properties have to stand on their own. They will not necessarily be impacting the other properties that are already in there. And if you would like to, Hannah, if you want to address that from the mud's perspective?
Mayor Protim and council, thank you. Yes, I'm Hannah Brook. I'm here for Ryan Harper. And yes, each property or project that is proposed to be annexed into the district goes through a feasibility process where the engineer and the financial advisor have to make sure that anything that is... that anything that is projected to be built on that property, that would be able to be standalone value. It will have to self-support any potential reimbursement to the developer, and that will come at a zero rebate to be included in that calculation. So, it will not be a detriment to the remainder of the district that is already in development and is currently developing. It will 100% have to stand on its own, and that is a risk that the developer will take for any potential reimbursement.
So, yes, they will be?
They will self-support.
Yeah.
Or they will not get paid. They will only get paid for what they are able to self-support.
I think somebody has their hand up.
Hi, Alan, you're with GrowMax Development. I think I understand, hear your question. The residents in the mud in this property or another, they're going to pay the same property tax regardless of the rebate. So, you pay the full mud tax, and you pay the full city tax. The rebate is just an internal question of, does the city pay some of its property tax over to the mud, which provides an extra financing stream to help the mud? And so, regardless of the rebate, the residents are going to pay the same tax.
Thank you. That's what I was asking.
So, the cost of that water sewer infrastructure will be added to the cost of the home price for, to pay for that, correct?
Well, it will be financed as a water sewer drainage project that the developer will pre-finance and will be able to be reimbursed based on what the value is on the ground across that project.
Just for my understanding, when we're talking about the 15%, which was moved down to 10%, which we've now moved down to zero, that was just an automatic payment that was made versus now for expenses that qualify, those can still be submitted for reimbursement? It's just not an automatic 10% or 15% kickback? Is that correct?
That is correct. And as Mr. Mueller indicated a while ago, they were paying the entire city tax as well as the entire mud tax. There was, as he said, an additional revenue stream in that had been there years ago, and it was done as sort of an incentive originally when in-city muds were first started here with Mud 17, 18, and 19 were the original in-city mud. And when that occurred, there was, that rebate was there sort of to provide that additional revenue stream. And then, over the years, council has finally realized that, hey, that additional revenue stream is no longer needed as a mechanism to encourage growth in this community.
That seems to be evident here, right?
Yeah, and so, going down to the zero rebate policy moving forward seemed to make the most sense.
Thank you.
Councilman Perez?
Alan, can I borrow you for a second? So, the maps are in the exhibit a little unclear as the specific locations. Could you elaborate?
Yeah, so that's, the consent to the annex is actually the next item. This is just for the, but the two tracks, the first tract is what's called the Midtown at Magnolia Town Homes, wraps around the CVS at Magnolia on 1128. The second tract is on Old Alvin Road, beyond the west side of Old Alvin Road, north of Town Ditch, kind of across from the Triangle Tract, I guess you'd call it, so, south of the apartments.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hernandez?
No comment. Thank you.
I don't have any comment on this.
Anything else from staff?
No further comments.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion, a second on the floor.
Councilmember Reed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
All right, we're moving to item number four. Councilman Perez, will you present this item?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2019-223, so moved.
Second.
Staff report?
Okay. Yes, Mayor Pro Tem and counsel, this is the follow-up item to the utility agreement that was just amended. As indicated earlier, this would be consent for the addition of approximately 31 acres into the boundaries of Brazoria Harris County Mud 509. The seven and a half, almost seven and a half acres is the Midtown at Magnolia development that Mr. Mueller just referenced at 1128. And then, the other 23 and a half acres or so is the property that is on Old Alvin Residential Development, I believe by Giann Homes.
We'll open for council comments. Councilman Perez?
No additional comment.
Councilman Hernandez?
No comments. Thank you.
Councilman Moore?
No comment.
Councilman Owens?
No comment.
Councilman Orlando?
Nothing further.
Councilman Reed? Madam Secretary, we have a motion, a second on the floor.
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you. Councilman Hernandez, will you present item number five on the agenda?
Sir, thank you. Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2019-225, so moved.
Second.
Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and city council. We're pleased to present this item to you. This is approving the city's Hurricane Harvey Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Action Plan. And what this does is, that plan will be submitted to the Texas General Land Office. Based on damage assessments from Hurricane Harvey, there were 1,784 homes in Pearland that were affected. Because of that, we are going to be allocated $2,727,372 for buyouts of flood-affected homes impacted by Hurricane Harvey and $2,657,140 for infrastructure and capital improvements for a grand total of over $5,300. With your approval of this particular action plan, we're going to go ahead and submit the grant application. We'll get the allocation as the projects are completed on a reimbursable basis, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Opening for council discussion, starting with Councilman Hernandez.
I don't have any questions on this. Just think that the plan is great. I'm always in awe of Mr. Hardy's abilities to work with all this stuff and staff as a whole. I mean, it's something that I think everybody's been looking at for a long time, and I'm happy that we have a plan in place. Thank you.
Councilman Moore?
Yeah, I'm just glad to see that we're going to be able to take care of some of the stuff that's been hanging out there, and this block grant allows us to do that. So, thanks, staff, for their efforts in getting this grant.
Councilman Owens?
Joel, can we be put in the expeditious lane here to get it going during our lifetime? Get the money back?
Yes, Councilmember Owens. Looks like the GLO is on the fast track to disperse the funds. They will have to review the action plan, of course, but we've been working with them closely throughout the development process, and they're aware of what our plan is. Unfortunately, Melissa Washington cannot be with us tonight. She's elsewhere at another council meeting, but I spoke with her today, and they're ready to receive this and begin the process of reviewing for approval.
That's good. Thank you. You did a great job on this, putting it together.
Thank you.
Councilman Orlando?
Good work. Nothing for me.
Councilman Reed?
Ditto. Great job, Joel, on getting these funds in.
Councilman Perez?
Just a couple of questions with respect to how the funds are going to be allocated. So, on the ditch widening and the undersized pipes, are those all projects that we've already identified, or are there projects? Is the GLO going to require us to do target-specific areas that we haven't already considered as part of our master drainage plan or will consider as part of master drainage plan?
So, I want to say that some of these projects are included in master drainage plan activities. I guess the impetus for this work was to, kind of on a spot basis, deal with some areas that needed some minor improvements. Mimosa Acres, of course, is not one of those projects. That's one that's very clearly spelled out in a CIP project, but the Brooklyn Acres and the work that's in the old town site in a general way kind of tie into the CDBG target area, and that's the area that is going to be east of Cullen, west of 35, north of 518, and south of Clear Creek. And we've got a lot of opportunity to spend money in that area in ways that involve, again, some minor improvements that can help overall in certain neighborhoods.
We're not bound by the CDBG boundary, correct?
Actually, for the area benefit program, which would be the infrastructure improvements, we do have to do this work in the CDBG target area or in areas that we've conducted surveys, income surveys of residents, and we have not done that. So, we've approached it the same way that we've approached our regular program activities with the allocations we get directly from HUD, and we've stuck with the CDBG target area.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to make it easy.
Great work, Joel.
Nice job, Joel, and the people that were involved in helping you with this. We'll move on to item number six on the agenda. Councilman Moore, would you present this?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Want to vote?
Yes.
Sorry about that. I'm new at this. Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Now, you can present it, Councilman Moore.
Thank you. Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2019-217, so moved.
Second.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir. For this item, we're recommending approval of a contract to Freez and Nichols in the amount of $1,298,809 for design services for package number one. Of course, I think you're familiar with this project. These services will complete the process design work for the treatment plant that will provide drinking water for citizens of Pearland for the future. The scope includes design of raw water intake, the structure and pump station, as well as the site detention. With these services and the services that we're recommending on the next item, we'll be closer to bringing the city's largest capital improvement project of all time online during the winter of 2023. We do recommend approval, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Council discussion, starting with Councilman Moore.
I don't have anything right now. Thank you.
Councilman Owens?
Is someone here from Freeze Nichols?
Can you please go to the podium?
We're good. We just wanted?
Go ahead and come up. I do have questions for you.
My apologies.
First of all, what's your hourly rate?
Good evening, everybody. My name is David Munn. I'm with Freez and Nichols, and I will be the project manager on this portion of the design project. Happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Were you on the preliminary engineering side of it also?
No, sir. I've been with Freez and Nichols since February of this year, but have gotten up to speed on the preliminary design as well.
Nothing for me.
Councilman Reed?
It's a federally funded, this part of the project, is it federal money or is it just?
No, we have a loan through the Texas Water Development Board, but these are, we issued bonds for this, revenue bonds for this project.
From the city?
Councilman Reed, that's correct. I mean, it's a low-interest loan that we have with regards to, with regards to it from Texas Water Development Board. So, there is some federal money tied to it. They've complied with all regulations. TWDB has reviewed all contracts, and everything is set in standard.
Okay, so there is a federal component. Because I guess my question is about the subs that they have. I mean, as far as the federal component, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's supposed to be like a hub requirement to it, historically underutilized business or MWV?
Those components, as TWDB has reviewed, have all been met and required. Their attempts were made to reach out, and those are guidelines and goals, not mandated. But, they were, they followed the forms, followed the procurement, advertised correctly to procure those subs that we did in the first go-around when we did the preliminary engineering studies to get to 30%. And those same subs have not changed, so there's no further paperwork that has to be done with the board.
So, and since you've only been here since February, I'm assuming you don't know who you all reached out to? What companies that you interviewed for subs besides the ones that you chose?
Yeah, I know who the final team was. I was not here and am not familiar with who we interviewed but did not decide upon. We can get that information to you.
I think the only ones you have right now, you're showing CL Davis, which is not a hub, and for surveying, and GeoTest, or Geotechnical, which they are minority on there. And also, within your, you'll hear, it shows Hatch, but I don't see what they're doing.
So, Hatch is our electrical sub. When we originally brought them on to the team back during the preliminary design, they were Schrader. Schrader was then bought by Hatch, so they lost that minority status.
Okay. And is that all the subs that you have, unless the rest of the work will be done by Freez Nichols?
For the final design, yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilman Perez?
Do you know the name of your subs off the top of your head?
Yes, it's Hatch, CL Davis, and GeoTest.
GeoTest or Geotech?
Test.
Yeah, so, well, I think you would meet it. So, all right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Moore? Madam Secretary, we have a motion, a second on the floor.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passed six to one.
Thank you. Moving right along, we're item number seven. Would you present that? Councilman Owens?
Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2019-216, so moved.
Second.
Staff discussion?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and counsel. For this item, we're recommending of approval of a contract with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc. in the amount of $2,900,000 for final design services for water plant package number three. Package three consists of the onsite work for the ground storage tank, the high-service pump station, the administration building, the wastewater force main, site security and fencing, public and plant entrance drives and parking. It also includes the off-site components consisting of the transmission pipelines and connections into the existing production stations at 521 and Kirby Drive. Like this last item that you just approved, this will help us finalize the project, the design work, and move forward and deliver this project in the winter of 2023. That completes my report.
We'll open it for council discussion, starting with Councilman Owens.
I'll ask the same question. Who's here?
Please come up to the podium.
My name's John Keane. I'm the project principal with Stan Tech Consulting. I have my PM, Jerah Park, here with me as well.
Okay. Who's your subs on your team?
We have three subs. Our... Our five engineering, GeoTests, and HDR.
Okay, because normally Stan Tech is not known water, wastewater type projects, but I know the firm that y'all bought, which was well-known on that.
Right.
So, yeah, so that, so you got Robbie on there again with GeoTest, and HDR is not a minority firm either. And what was your other one?
Five engineering. It's a woman-owned business. It's a woman-owned that's less parent.
So that was, but that was just the same questions that we had previously on it. And it's a pretty healthy contract that y'all got, 2.9 million on there. And so, the only thing I can wish you, since you're through here, I wish you all the best to getting it done without any change orders. Okay?
We're looking forward to it. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Councilman Orlando?
Nothing for me yet.
Councilman Reed?
Councilman Owens asked all the questions. Appreciate it.
Councilman Perez?
No comment.
Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you for being here. No comment. Thank you.
Councilman Moore?
Nothing.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion order on the floor.
Councilmember Owens, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Moving to item number eight on the agenda. Councilman Orlando, will you present that?
Consideration possible action resolution number R two thousand nineteen dash two one four. So moved.
Second.
Staff report.
Thank you, sir, and council. For this item, we're recommending approval of a construction services contract for the Bailey Road Water Plant to DN Tanks, Inc. in the amount of $1,581,785. The project consists of the construction of a new pre-stressed concrete ground storage tank and underground piping to connect to the existing supply and discharge piping. There is additional planned work, because I know this brought up before, but it's not part of this contract to address the water quality. We do have issues. There's a filtration system that's not part of this agreement that will address the iron and magnesium problems that we've had with this plant. But for this in particular, it's the construction of the tank, and then it's also the piping. We'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, sir. Opening for council discussion, starting with Councilman Orlando.
Nothing for me.
Councilman Reed?
No comment.
Councilman Hernandez?
No comment on this.
Councilman Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. In our, in our packet, it says that one of the reasons why we're redoing this tank is because it was damaged. Refilling the tank. Can you explain to me how that was possible, since this tank was made to hold water, and how it was overfilled and was damaged?
Councilman Moore, many months ago, or about a year ago, there was an incident there where we were refilling the tank to bring it online. It had been dormant for many years. It was looking to be a reboosterization, re-pressurization station, take water off the system and repressurize it. We were going through the disinfection stage. A employee was pulled off of watching that, and as a result of that, the tank overflowed. The overflow cannot handle, the overflow weir could not handle the discharge, the amount of water coming in. It went out the top and basically buckled the top of the tank and the top rings of steel and basically opened it up like a beer can. And therefore, structurally damaged that tank. And moving that into the next step is to be able to replace that tank to put that well back online.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Owens? Yeah, I remember the discussion that we had on that. And one of the discussion items was that, well, the tank was old anyway, and we probably weren't going to use it. And so, but now we're coming back, spending over a million dollars to build another new one out there. I don't know. It's, I guess, a big concern that, you know, that it did happen out there, you know, on that and put us out of business in that particular area. But when we discussed it and the statement was made that, you know, that the tank was old and we're probably going to use it anyway. And so now we're coming back, and we're going to be building a new one out there. So that was just a concern I had when I read this and seen where we were at on it, and then to come back and, and to spend a million and a half dollars on something that really didn't seem to be a big problem in the beginning because it was, you know, it was rusted. So, but was it always in effect to replace this? I mean, from indication we had first that we weren't going to replace it.
Councilman Owens, I don't recall that that being said about this particular tank. That may have been another tank that we did decommission over this past year. It was always the intention, when this tank was damaged, that it would need to be replaced as part of our overall water system, and that we needed that, that capacity in that tank in that particular location. So it was always the intention to replace this tank.
Yeah, from the indications and when some questions were asked, it was, it was kind of not meaningful that it happened, that, you know, that there really wasn't a big concern about it because it wasn't going to be used anyway. But that's maybe here or there at this point, so.
I have one other follow-up question. What's the life expectancy of the, the new tank?
Concrete tank is over a 50-year lifespan.
Okay, so the new one will be concrete, not steel?
That's right. It's pre-stressed concrete tank.
Okay.
It'd be similar to, I apologize, Councilman Moore, but it'll be similar to the one we're constructing over at 521 right now.
Councilman Perez?
No comment.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion, a second on the floor.
Councilmember Orlando, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine and the final, final item on the agenda. Would you present this, Councilman Reed?
Thank you. Consideration possible action resolution number R two thousand nineteen dash two two seven. So moved.
Second.
Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. For this item, we're recommending approval of a contract for construction services to McDonald Electric in the amount of $1,83,469 for the installation of a 750K natural gas generator, modifications to the electrical distribution center to operate the new generator, interior improvements to the facility, including the installation of folding partitions, stained concrete flooring, and then modifications to the north side of the gymnasium needed to eliminate continuous maintenance issues that we have at that end of the facility. I want to mention that contract selection was made via the competitive sealed proposal process based on the provision of the best value for the city. It's important to note that we can only evaluate the information that we receive for those that submit the proposals. This is our standard procedure when we evaluate projects. We have different scoring criteria. Based on the information that was provided by the two bidders, we are recommending the contract to McDonald Electric. And if you have any questions, we'd be pleased to answer those questions.
Was there a, the other contractor slightly lower than the one that you're recommending?
It is. I will mention that, again, when somebody submits a proposal, we stipulate all of the information that they have to submit in the contract or in the information. And some of the information was submitted, but not all of the information, and that's why they had a lower price. In this particular situation, I want to make a reference. You all probably recall the Tom Reed Library. On the Tom Reed Library, we had several bidders on the project. And the, the low bidder on this particular project just so happened to be the third low bidder on that project. At that time, we disqualified the top two bidders because they did not submit the information in their bid package, similar, their proposal, similar to what we have here. So we're just following the process that we normal, normally follow, and we want to make sure that when we present the information to you, they've complied with all of the details that we've asked them for. And so, yes, in answer to your question, the other proposer was a little lower, but based on the criteria submitted, we are recommending approval.
In those situations where a contractor submits an incomplete bid package, do we go back to them and give them an opportunity to correct their shortcomings, or do our rules or ordinances not allow that?
I'm going to let Robert answer this, but typically, if somebody doesn't submit the information or Darren, and, you know, we take it based on what's submitted.
Might be an indication of the quality of work they would do. Can't get the bid package right?
The answer to that would be, you would have to postpone that item tonight and go back and reconsider information that was submitted, but...
Hold on. The question was, if a bidder doesn't submit all the required bidding documents, can we then go back and ask them to submit those after the bids were due and opened?
No, not after the bids are opened, no.
Okay, thank you. I will open it for council discussion. Councilman Reed?
You know, it seems like almost every other meeting, maybe once a month, we get some item on here for the natatorium. You kind of explained, I guess, the contract, but, you know, I have a hard time continuing to throw just different money, you know, into this. And we don't seem to be addressing some of the more pertinent needs. The basketball court, for instance, so a few council members and myself were in there about a month ago, and it looked horrible. But, you know, I haven't seen anything on, on any of our agenda items to replace that. It looked very bad, but we're, you know, I guess, looking to replace the generator and some other things throughout the offices and whatnot in there. So, again, I mean, I'm probably gonna, not probably, I'm, I'm going to be a no vote on this one, but, you know, I think that there, there are other things that we definitely need to be looking at if we're going to keep throwing money into this.
Councilmember Reed, if you don't mind. Do you mind, Mayor Protem? So I should have started out by saying, the reason why we're doing this project doesn't have anything to do with the regular operation of the natatorium and recreation center. It has everything to do with that facility being a shelter of last resort when there's an emergency situation. Right now, it does not have emergency generator power, and what this will do is this will allow us to operate that facility. This past time with Harvey, we were fortunate in that the electricity did not go out. Otherwise, we would not have been able to shelter people there in place for an amount of time until a permanent shelter opened up. So this doesn't have anything to do with the regular operation of the facility. This is for emergency preparedness. The improvements that you talked about regarding the basketball court, if you go down to the opposite end, you probably saw ceiling tiles and things like that were out. That's what part of this, only a small part of this is for. The vast majority is for the generator itself. And then in order to be able to locate that and then pipe the, do the transfer switch for the generator from the electrical system so that in an emergency, it turns over immediately. So this is not about the operation of the facility. It's about providing a facility in an emergency situation.
Thank you.
Councilman Perez?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I'll, I'll cut this into two pieces, just kind of dovetail into what Member Reed said. Though it is not, the Recreation Center is part of the agenda. I understand that the maintenance and operation, the maintenance of the, of the rec center is not necessarily the component to, to this. And I, and I appreciate the benefit of the generator outside of the maintenance operation of the rec. I think for, maybe for our identification, because it does seem like maintenance projects for the rec kind of come up pretty frequently. It seems more frequently than any other facility that we have. I have my theories on why that is, and it doesn't have anything to do with staff, doesn't have to do with the location of the building. But it, but I think perhaps, you know, at some point in the future, we'd like to kind of maybe get a, a list of items of what we think is future maintenance for this, for this project. At some point, either we invest a lot of money in getting this thing up to speed and redesigned, or we keep like nickel and diming it every time something kind of starts not working the way it's supposed to. Normal maintenance, replacing floors, replacing the track, that I understand, but having the HVAC system completely go out because of wasn't spec right, having the, the lighting features over in the natatorium not working properly because they, the ventilator, I mean, there's, there's stuff that just doesn't seem to have been spec right on a lot of the, a lot of components of the building outside of normal maintenance and operation. Kind of kicking to something that was proposed by staff and wasn't implemented at the time, but I think maybe in this year's budget, it was included. Maybe, maybe when, if we go back and do the building assessment, this could be a key component to that building assessment, to be able to go, go through that, that facility. And really, let's take a hard look at, you know, what we've invested, what, what still needs to be invested, and find out if there's a capital project where we need to do like one-time significant investment in the entire building and get it up to speed, again, as opposed to just kind of whack a mole in these problems as they come. That aside, because I do agree with the other members who have, who have made mention of, of this, this natatorium constantly seeming maintenance. It's no, again, no knock against any of the staff members, but it's just, it just seems like it comes up repeatedly. With respect to this project, obviously, we have some, we had access to some information about the, the bid that was included, or at least one of the bidders included, caused us to ask for some clarification. I appreciate staff's responsiveness. I want to stress, I think staff did everything that they were supposed to. They followed the precedents that have been set in the past. I think, you know, if, as a council, and I'm not going to say that this is, which direction we should go per se, but I say either we outright vote to kind of invalidate some of the precedents we set in the past, to go with the low bidder, which I don't think is necessarily a, a wrong move, or we decide to kick the entire contract out and go out and get, and rebid and give those contractors an opportunity to submit something that is accurate, since we, I think there's maybe some concern about the inaccuracy of, of one of the, or the low bidder. I think those are kind of the either ors. Personally, I'm fine with all three options. We give it to the, the lowest qualified bidder. We give it to the low bidder in the hopes that those disqualification, those normal disqualifications don't impede the ability to do the project, based on their experience in the past, it didn't seem to be, or we just kick the whole thing out and let them rebid. And I'll let other council members kind of maybe dictate that conversation and follow suit.
Is McDonald Electric a locally owned company?
Councilman Little, Mayor Protem Little, they are based out of, out of Houston.
Thank you. Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you. Yeah, so looking at this, I mean, there's a $70,000 difference. Do we have any history background with Construction Masters?
We do. They've done work for us previously.
And satisfactory work, or?
They've done good work for us.
So is that ever, I mean, outside of, I guess, the, the rubric that we have, is there any?
That was taken into consideration in the overall scoring.
And just on the off-chance, I guess we'll ask Woody's favorite question. For McDonald, is there anyone here in the audience? And then what about Construction Masters? Anybody here for Construction Masters? No? Okay. All right. I will let it continue, and I'll marinate on this a little bit. Thank you.
Councilman Moore?
Yeah, I'll echo some of the other statements have been made, but I've always pretty much predominantly been against a lot of the funding that goes to the natatorium because I always feel like it's a huge money pit. We just keep dumping money in, money in. We just keep dumping money in, money in, money in, money in. I understand what this project here is to do. And I understand that it could be needed in a disaster, but how many people could we house in the nadatorium if need be during an emergency situation?
A thousand, 1,500.
You said a thousand to 1,500?
1,01500, 1,500, excuse me. And again, just the Hurricane Harvey as an example, and we had people come in. We relocated them to another facility. We had more people come in, relocated them. During an emergency situation, it's a fluid, it's a fluid environment. And our goal is not to, especially during a hurricane, is to house somebody here a long time. Ideally, what we'd like to do is get them out into a safe zone. So, this is more or less like a shelter of last resort where we bring people in. It's an emergency situation, we have to take care of them at that time. So, that number could, you know, people could roll in and roll out, if you will.
And is somebody here from the design engineering side? Okay. I just want to, I want to make sure that this is designed right. It seems like everything, from the start of this facility, the design has been wrong. I.e., you know, some of the other council members named some of the ventilation system not too long ago. We had to redo that because people were breathing in chlorine. You know, we're constantly having to do something. The AC, we've had it fixed because the design was terrible on it and rotted out the AC unit. So, I just want to ensure that the design work on this is good, especially if this is going to be something I want to utilize for an emergency facility. We don't need to have issues and problems with it going forward. But I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on this just yet. I need to find, think about it until voter call.
Councilman Owens?
Yeah, just a quick deal on here. We, I guess, the overall amount, what we're doing for the electrical part, it was what, 907,000? I guess it was, altogether?
That's correct.
And then we had 425,000 in for certificates of obligation or other things. The other work that's in there, is that related to the installation of the, I guess, the generator or running the wiring or running a conduit or whatever we're doing in that? I see we've got some different things in there that we're doing. John, you might want to answer that, or?
Sure. As I mentioned, it is a gas-powered generator, and we do need to run lines from the generator to the facility itself. There's a switching system that takes it from regular power over to generator power. That has to be installed and hooked up. So, then there's some additional work where the generator has to be located. There's some partitions that have to be removed. And then there's just cleanup work and construction work when it's all said and done. And so, that's in the total project.
If you don't mind, can you, I need to ask you one question. In addition to how you're doing that, is any way that PISD is helping us on this or anything? Since they are part of the?
PISD's obligation on the facility is on the nadatorium only.
On the nadatorium only, okay. All right. For the additional work, the other work that's not related to that, is that something y'all going to do? Or you got a sub for that?
Well, I don't, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I don't, the additional work, we have several subs on this job. We'll do the electrical, we've got a concrete subcontractor, a mechanical subcontractor, some only partition wall contractor, drywall contractor. We have quite a few.
Okay, so that additional part, other than the generators, y'all going to sub that out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so I was just wondering from over on this, you know, we put in 400 and something thousand dollars for general obligation bonds, no, certificates of obligation for this. And I just kind of wondered why we didn't break it out under a different contract for the things that we were going to do other than the generator? Any particular reason for that, that we tagged these in there with that or not?
Sir, I can tell you that the majority of the work that I just described is something that goes hand-in-hand with the installation of the generator. It's, it goes with it. I mean, we've got a pour concrete for the generator set on. We've got to have natural gas piping to the generator. We've got to install a transfer switch to tie it to the building. Most of the stuff that, you know, that I mentioned, again, is part of installing a generator.
Okay. And the partition walls?
Now, the partition walls, no, and there's a new ceiling going in that's not. But other than that, everything is.
Member Owens, the contract, about 890,000 of that is exclusively associated with the generator, the transfer switch, and everything else associated with, the electrical work associated with the generator. And it's about 193 and some change, a thousand dollars on the partitions and the ceiling work. So, the vast majority of the work is on the generator.
Yes, have we just decided just to tag this in with it at the same time?
Yes.
All right, okay. I mean, it was just a question. It was kind of odd with that in there and then turn around and additional bonding on certificates of obligation, just go ahead and put these in there. It's just seemed like two different types of contract at one time that you not normally do. Okay.
Could I, excuse?
Harry Keller still work at McDonald Electric?
Sure did. He told me to say hello. Sure does.
Tell him I say hello back.
Watching you live right now.
Councilman Orlando?
Had a clarifying question. You're saying that there were several subcontractors in our packet. It says that McDonald will be self-performing 95% of the work. So, are those all in that 5% then? Or is, am I misunderstanding from the packet?
No, I'd be correct, Councilman Orlando, is that majority of all the work that will be done will be handled in, in with McDonald's contract.
Okay, so just?
They have subs as they are required to have to be able to do the work.
Sure. Okay, yeah, just weighing in on bouncing off of Trent's comments and some of the other comments, you know, from my perspective, kind of taking a step back from the rubric and just kind of what a layperson would view this as. You have two companies who, we've said, both have done good work for the city and have a track record of good work for the city. One is about 70,000 hours cheaper, 7% of the total project. And something that's not captured in our rubric, but that I've heard about many times before in attending these meetings, is that Construction Masters is headquartered here and based in Pearland, whereas McDonald is in Houston. So, I appreciate the rubric. I think everything was done correctly there. But, you know, ultimately, we rely on the council's decision versus the rubric because we want to make sure we have a holistic picture. And so, that's kind of where my thinking is at as of this point.
I believe the owner lives in Pearland, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any more questions or discussion from council?
If I may, Mayor Protem, I want to make sure that you're aware of how this agenda item is worded. It's awarding a project to McDonald Electric. So, that's your option, approve that item only. You could not substitute another contractor for that. So, I want to make that clear. I also do want to mention, we've had a lot of discussion over the operation and the upkeep of the nadatorium and recreation center. We presented some information to you before where council set a policy or a directive on where you'd like to see that facility operate from a cost recovery standpoint. That's roughly 74%. Since that policy was established, we exceeded that. And as a matter of fact, I believe it was in '18, we're at 100-plus cost recovery for the nadatorium and recreation center. I think council members very specifically and adequately stated that the facility is operating. There's just certain items like the HVAC system that we've had problems with. But the actual operation of the facility and the revenue generation that you set a policy on, we're actually exceeding that. So, I wanted to make that point as well.
Thank you for that clarification.
Does that include the debt that we take on through the bonds to, and the interest rate?
It doesn't. And just like our police station, City Hall, the Tom Reed Library, park improvements, none of those facilities take that into consideration. So, the policy that you set forward, we're exceeding that.
Anything more from council? Madam Secretary, we have a motion and order on the floor.
Councilmember Reed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
No.
Motion passed, five to two.
Okay, seeing that we have no other business and no city council discussion on the?